Okay, I'd like to call this regular board meeting to session. Roll call.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
Mr. Phallus.
President.
Mr. Smith.
President.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Yes, here.
Pledge of allegiance.
Treasurer, Mr. Weber, Superintendent, Mr. Tucker, Board President, Mr. Damacchia, distinguished board members. Tonight, we have a sixth grade student from Lark Elementary School who will lead a pledge of allegiance, Cassidy Freitag. Cassidy is the daughter of Wendy and Joe Freitag. After her pledges, Cassidy will speak about Larkmore School. Ms. Chantel Lewis, principal at Lark Elementary School, is here tonight to support her student.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, I'm going to be saying a speech about why I love Larkmore School. I came to Larkmore five years ago. My teachers that I had are Ms. Duziak, another Ms. Duziak, Ms. Hayden, Ms. Bruce, and Ms. Schuster. I love Larkmore because it almost feels like a second home to me. I like to play on the playground. It makes me feel free. All of my teachers are kind and helpful to me. I have three of my best memories to share. Number three is fun days. I like all the fun days, but my favorite was when I was in fifth grade. I loved bouncing houses, and they had a lot of them. I felt like I was four again. Man, I had a blast. Number two was the Easter Bunny. Before spring break, the Easter Bunny came to Larkmore. I was so happy. I got out of my seat to hug him, and people thought there were no Easter Bunny. And number one is my first day. My first day at Larkmore was the best. I gained friends very fast. I got used to the routine. I had a lot of fun. Soon, I'll have to say goodbye. Some things that I'll miss are the fun days, those delicious cheese sticks with marinara sauce, the best thing I ever ate in that school. But I'll miss my teachers most of all. Ms. Lewis is an awesome principal. She knows how to get lunchtime students to be quiet. Plus, this is Mr. Tucker's last year, and I will miss you. Mr. Tucker, you are a great superintendent. This would not be possible without you. I love and will miss Larkmore School when I begin my next journey to the seventh grade.
Excellent job. We would like for the parents, please, stand as well. What a wonderful job. Excellent student. Proud of you, Phallus. Raising a great student. Cassidy, I'd like for your potential certificate, signed by Mr. Tucker. And we also like a picture of you and your family as well with the board members.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent.
I need a motion to approve or amend and sign the minutes from the last special board meeting?
There's no minutes. We're not done with them yet. We're still working on them. We're not done.
Oh, thanks, Dan.
We're passing.
Any old business? Report and recommendations of the treasurer. Excuse me. I'll skip you, too.
I have two items on the agenda. Item 8.01 is the approval of donations. There's three donations there. Item 8.02 is the approval of the contract with Lorain County ESC. I'm assuming to be pending a discussion with Mr. Ring before we do. So, I'll just recommend for approval right now, item 8.01.
Motion to approve item 8.01.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Phallus.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
So, you want to have the superintendent items first, then go back to this?
Yeah, let's go. Let's get through the agenda, and we'll come back for the boardwork session and handle that.
Okay.
Report and recommendations of the superintendent.
Two quick things to report. On May the 11th, and this information's been out, it was scheduled as a PD day for the calendar. It will be a student day because of the, once again, calamity days that we had to deal with. And also, that week, new beginnings and new beginning students and Admiral King students will be coming 20 minutes early and staying 20 minutes later to make up the days, the extra days that they had out. Letters should go out, and the information should be out. As far as some title funding, we have lost title funds for various reasons. There's a number of reasons. One, federal funding, excess funds are gone. The state has reduced Title II funding for every district, and they reduced our Title I. So, that will mean we'll just have to adjust the budgets. There will be a number of people that were funded out of Title, not a number, just a few, that are funded out of Title that won't be next year. But those positions, there's enough people retiring this year that there will be available positions for them, and they're mostly in the elementary positions at that point. So, it's, this has happened before, and it's just, and it's happening across state, just not to Lorain. Okay, under action items, I'd like to ask for approval of action items 9.01 through 9.06.
Motion to approve 9.01 through 9.06.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Phallus.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes. On 9.06, as you know, we hired Robert Kleiner for a principal from Lorain High School. He is a returnee. He's just like me, coming back. And he's here tonight, and if you would like to come and say a few words, or just say hello, we're excited to have him back, and this was a long process and a lot of interviews.
Thank you. I'm actually a little anxious having followed Cassidy here, because she had her notes prepared and everything, and I hope I do as well as you, young lady. I don't think words can really express my gratitude to the board for having confidence in Mr. Tucker's recommendation of me as principal of Lorain High School. There's a certain feeling of comfort and warmth coming back to Lorain after starting my administrative career here. Hopefully, I will finish my administrative career here. I always said that there's two reasons I would come back to Lorain: Yalla's Pizza and this position as principal of Lorain High School. So, tonight, I think I'm going to celebrate both of those items. But I would like to just say that I want you to have the utmost confidence in my leadership ability and my effectiveness as an educational leader, because I believe in this district. I'm a product of this community. I feel a very strong sense of collaborative type of approach in working with our children to help them be successful and achieve academically here. And the way I'm going to do that is to continue to work with our instructional staff to help them use the most creative instructional strategies in the classroom to help our kids perform, to put our students in the best position to have success. They've had so much success here recently outside of the classroom. There's no reason why we can't continue to have success in the classroom. And my style of leadership is a motivational style that I always had in the classroom, as well on the football field, and now in my leadership capacity as principal of Lorain High School. So, that's what you can expect from me, and I can guarantee that you won't regret making this decision. So, I'm very thankful, and I'm very excited to be here, and I look forward to a nice finish to my career with Lorain High. So, thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
I was at a meeting today in Oberlin, and driving back, I got a phone call from someone I have not heard from in a long time. Someone may remember the name of Ray Pagon. He was my mentor when I became a principal at Admiral King. He was congratulating me on my retirement, and I also said, "Well, you mentored someone else who's returning to the district," and I mentioned your name. He goes, "Oh, it started with me a long time ago." So, he's very happy you're back, too.
Welcome back to Lorain.
That would be munchy, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, that's munchy. At this time, I'd like to report some recommendations, superintendent operation matters, subject 10.01 through 10.05.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
10.01, 10.05 through 10.01. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Phallus.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
And Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
Last action, National Teacher Appreciation Week's coming up, and we pass a resolution every year, so the last for approval of 11.01.
Motion to approve item 11.01.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Phallus.
Yes.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
Concludes my report.
Thank you. Any new business? Committee reports.
Why are we?
We'll go back to it.
Oh, okay.
Second hearing in the public.
I'm a mother that cares for her child. I'm not good at speaking in public, but being with me. I'm not going to get emotional. But my son got suspended today, and I'm here for him, to voice for him, because he got suspended for a phone. And I know that there's rules. I know. But I begged assistant principal not to suspend my son, because that goes on his record. And they said, "No." So, you know, instead of saying, you know, "Why? What is wrong? Why don't you refuse it? Let me call your mom. Give him a chance." And they didn't. After they hung up with me, they told my son that that's sad. What does that mean? When he said that comment to a child that's 15 years old, that he has problems? He didn't even bother to ask, "Do you have any problems? Let's talk." He didn't even say nothing. So, what is the mother supposed to do? When I went over there, they looked at me, "Oh, here she comes again." Well, of course, because I love my son with my heart. So, when I asked, I begged again, they said, "No." I know there's rules, and I know that, but can you give him a chance? It's like they're out to get him. I don't know. I'm not saying my son is a perfect, you know, child, because he's not, by all means. But he's struggled so much in a lot of things that I have to protect him, because he's my baby. So, and when I asked for his homework, they said, "Well, we're doing testing, so we'll get to him when we get to it." So, what kind of people is that at the school, saying that to a child, to me, or to a child? When I talk to the other people, I fight for my son, because he has no one to speak to, because he doesn't know how to stick up for himself. So, what do I do? So, he's suspended for five days. For what? For a phone? I mean, I know there's rules intact, and I know there is, but over a phone? I give my son a phone because of the stuff that you see on TV. So, if something happens, I want to hear my son's voice. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
She need to talk to is Dr. Hall right behind you, and he can, he can give you some information and help you.
Thank you.
Okay, just to catch everybody back up. I don't see anybody else here for hearing. We do have one other item on the agenda, 8.02, which is a contract with ESC that pertains to the superintendent's search. We also have on the agenda a boardwork session to discuss that publicly, the process. Mr. Ring is here to have that conversation with us. We do have some folks from the Academic Distress Commission that will be on the phone with us as well, and Mr. Patterson is here in attendance as well. So, we will have that conversation, but before we do that, I do need a motion to go into executive session. It will be a short, brief executive session for item A4, discipline.
Motion to go into executive session for item A4.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Phallus.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
And again, we will be coming out to finish that portion of our agenda with the boardwork session to talk about the superintendent's search. Anybody that leaves, our next board meeting will be held May 4th at 6:30 right here. Thank you. We are now back into regular session.
At 7:25.
7:25, back into regular session. What I'd like to do before we start our boardwork session is finish up our agenda. We have item 8.02, which is the contract with ESC, and we did have a recommendation for that, so I need a motion for approval of item 8.02.
Motion to approve item 8.02.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Phallus.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
And Mr. Damacchia.
Yes. So, that would ultimately complete our agenda, regular scheduled agenda, and we do have on that agenda a boardwork session to discuss. Just to catch everybody up to speed, item 8.02 was a contract entering into an agreement with the Educational Service Center to conduct the search for the next superintendent of Lorain City School District. And before we actually go into the work session, I don't believe we need Mr. Tucker here. So, if there are no objections, I dismiss Mr. Tucker from our regular meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Why? Let him stay.
He can stay if he wants.
I'm always available.
You might have ideas for it.
Thank you.
To start our boardwork session, as we have defined the process in which this board is going to take to select the next superintendent for Lorain City Schools, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Ring step up and talk a little bit about the process in which the ESC will take, as well as answer any questions that he might have, and any questions that the board might have at this time.
Thank you, President Damacchia, and welcome, board, Mr. Weber, and guests. Glad to be here this evening. It's truly our pleasure to serve the Lorain City Schools with the superintendent's search. Just a couple documents I want to share with you. I do appreciate the conversations I've had with Treasurer Weber and President Damacchia, who have been very helpful in putting our thoughts together. If there's something we need to change, that certainly can happen. So, if you look on the second page of the handout that I gave you, that is our proposed scope of services. And just to look at that just real quickly, what the scope will be, really, we're at number one this evening. That's what we're doing right now. It's an initial meeting will be held, and to talk a little bit about the timeline, which we will do here in a minute. And the only other thing that I want to accomplish tonight is to discuss the important qualities desired by the next superintendent, because we are developing a brochure that will go to every superintendent and beyond in the state of Ohio, and we want to make sure that we have accurate information and that we have a good idea of who it is that you want as your next superintendent, what traits that you want. Announce the position opening and advertise electronically. We've actually already done that, and I will tell you, we've already had some response to that. I've had actual applications from a few people and some phone calls of people that are interested and want to talk, and that's certainly part of what we do, is talk about the position and share what we know about the Lorain superintendency. We will maintain an application credential log for all of your candidates. We'll keep you updated through the process, so every week or so, I'll update that so you'll know who has applied. Of course, we receive all applications and credentials, and we'll conduct an initial paper screening, and that will be largely based on what you tell me this evening about some of the traits that you're looking for. If there are things that are, that would stop the process, there's certainly no reason for me to bring those people along the process any further. So, we'll take care of the paper screening, make sure credentials are in order, and all of those type things. We will conduct an initial onsite professional interview with the candidates to demonstrate appropriate experience and credentials that you've identified. We will then, and I have a team of usually three people that do that. I have my curriculum person at the ESC, as well as our director of services, and the three of us usually come together and spend about 35, 40 minutes with each one of the candidates. We try to do it in purpose, in person. We have to do it by phone. Sometimes, that's the best way that it works, but we do try to seek out all of those qualified people and have that initial screening interview on behalf of you as the ESC. It would then be our desire to present to you a list of five or six candidates for consideration, and traditionally, that's the most important thing that we do for school boards. Number six is to present credentials of the top 10 candidates to your community screening committee. I'm calling it a community candidate review committee, where I know that you would like to get the community involved. We encourage you to do that, and we'll work with you in any way we can to coordinate that process with you. And they indeed can look at those top 10 candidates and make recommendations to you in addition to those that we will select and give to you as well. So, based on the interviews that the ESC will do, based on the interviews that the community candidate review board will do, then the board will make the selection of the top five or six people that you want to bring in for interviews. Through the process, we will do some reference checking on the interview candidates prior to the board interviews. That's not a final reference. You'll want to do your own reference checks. Once you get down to that point where you've got two or three people identified, I highly encourage the board to make your own calls, make your own contacts, maybe even take the time to visit some communities. I don't know if you've done that in the past, but a lot of the school boards that I work with in this process, once we get down to that final two candidates, they'll go visit the communities, they'll go talk to people in the communities where those superintendents currently serve. We'll do everything that we can to facilitate the initial board interviews. I'll be here, and I'm the person you're going to see. There won't be anybody else come in from the ESC. This is the only face you'll probably see through the whole process, and I'll be happy to be a part of those interviews, just to simply facilitate and help those go smoothly. As we mentioned, then, the board, after that first round of interview, would identify your top two or three candidates, will then have a final candidate interview with the board, and if necessary, I would be happy to assist you in making reference contacts. But again, I encourage you to do that on your own. And then the final selection of the superintendent, and if you would need, we are available to help you negotiate contract, but a lot of times, the board wants to do that on their own. But if we can serve in any capacity to help you in that process, we would be happy to do that. You can see the fee for service there, and we thank you for giving us the support this evening to move ahead with the search. Real quickly, let's look at the timeline. This will kind of jive with the process that I just shared with you. We've already announced your vacancy. It's out there. It's been sent to several websites and is posted across the state of Ohio and statewide organizations like OSBA, BASSA, and OASBO, places like that. Our deadline for applications, we have established at May 5th. That gives exactly three weeks for people to respond. I found that's plenty of time. If people can't find and take the time to respond within three weeks, then I have some concerns. So, three weeks should be plenty for us to get applications in. Meeting with the board, of course, that's what we're doing this evening. As soon as those credentials start coming in, I'll start screening those. I'll look again based on the conversations that we have. I'll start the credential screening immediately, and I will also, I will not wait till May 5th to start the preliminary interviews, the screening interviews. We'll go ahead and start those. We'll start to have those conversations so that we're hit the ground running, so to speak, because we're on a somewhat of a tight timeline. About the week of, sometime in the week of May 11th, I will meet with you again. I'll provide you credentials, resume packets of the top 10, as well as the top five, names of all those that I've interviewed, and I'll share some of my perspective, some of my thoughts on strengths and concerns with some of the candidates. The screening committee, then, of course, will have the top 10 that will move to them, and then the week of the 18th, they'll be reviewing those things, and I'm sure that they will want to make a recommendation to the board as well. The week of the 25th, you'll have a week there to take all of that input in, that from the ESC, that from your screening committee as well. And then I'm proposing that sometime around the 1st of June, that you would conduct first round interviews, second round interviews, probably that next week, be the week of June the 8th. And then, if necessary, if you need a third round, if you need to boil it down, it would be the next week. A lot of times, after the second interview, I think you'll know, if you start to make especially those face-to-face contacts in communities and reference checks, I think you'll get a pretty good idea of the candidates you have and who's the best. So, we want to button all of this up by your second board meeting in June, which I think is the 22nd, if I remember President Damacchia and I talking about that, and we want to button this thing up and hopefully have the person ready to go to work on July 1. There might be a possibility that that wouldn't be to August 1, but if you need some help with an interim to get you through the month, I'm sure either internally or through the ESC, we can assist you if that would happen. But we will sure target having the person in the job on July 1. So, any questions so far about the scope of sequence services or the superintendent's search timeline? Yes, sir.
At what time, at a what point on the timeline would, should the community screening committee first become involved?
You will have information from me the week of the, May the 11th. So, at that point, you know, I'll work through Mr. Weber or Mr. Damacchia to get that information. So, anytime, you know, after that time, once I have that material and those recommendations to you, then so the week of the 11th, and we'll give them also the week of the 18th to meet, to convene, to look through the credentials, and provide some feedback to you.
Would you meet, you think it would be appropriate for you to meet with the screening committee?
I'd be happy to do that, sure.
Bring them up today, give them, you know, some suggestions, you know, so that they
Yep.
Have some ideas of what they should do, what their timeline should be. Would you meet with them?
Absolutely. Have no problem with that whatsoever, just really to facilitate. I don't want to influence, really, their decisions. If they have questions for me, I'll be happy to share that. But we're really, really trying to bring two sets of recommendations to you from really two different organizations, you know, your screening committee, your community people, and then the ESC as well. Hopefully, those things will jive. We'll see some crossing over with the best candidates, and we'll go from there. But I'd be happy to help, yeah. I'll be happy to help in any way.
And by the time they come into play, they could be already screened, um...
Yes.
By your...
Yes, they will be. Yep, my screening will be completed by the time that your community group sees them. I will have created, finished my screening process. I will have talked to the candidates and be able to give them some heads up in whatever information that they would want. But again, I want them to come, you know, with an open process.
If I could interject, you know, listening to Mr. Smith and his comments, I think it would be beneficial for the committee group to be brought together before May 11th, just to explain to them what their role will be, maybe introduce you, and kind of introduce each other in that group, since there are going to be a variety of people in there. So, we may decide to do that upon your availability, of course, to bring those folks in, to thank them for their service in the district, as well as define what their role and responsibility is and how valuable their input will be in this process.
No problem. That's a great idea, and I'd be happy to work with you in that manner. I have a few questions.
I have a question. Yes, a question. You indicated that as you're getting applicants, you would forward information to us. What format is that in? I guess the concern is, when it comes to us formally, it is not public record and subject to request. And I know lots of candidates, they want to apply, but they don't necessarily want. So, whatever discretion needs to be utilized...
Understand. And really, all we would give you is just a name, maybe their current position, and an address. We're not going to, at that point, early in the process, like I said, we'll update you just on the number of candidates and maybe a few names, but we won't give you full credential packets.
If we have that, I guess it's a legal question, is that information accessible in a public records request?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we need to talk about that, I think.
I remember last time, we didn't get that information until...
We didn't get it.
We didn't get the detailed candidate's information until we got the top 10 that they...
Right.
candidate's information until we got the top ten that they have selected.
Right.
I think that would be the best way to go.
I agree.
My understanding is yes. Is that once I receive an application, a formal application from a candidate, at that point, there becomes a public record.
And when would their resume and all their written things become public?
At that point, I would say that as soon as I, as soon as I receive those items, I believe it becomes public record at that point, unless the attorney will tell me something different, but I think that's normally the process.
You know, and I got to say that I think that any applicant that gets to that part of the process and actually applies, I don't think they're trying to be discreet anymore. And I think at that point in time, they've already spoken to their board in their district to make them aware, because they don't want to put themselves in a bad place. And certainly, either the board's going to understand or not understand. So at that time, when they do apply, I think that they're fully aware and their district's fully aware what they're looking at trying to do at that time.
But what if a reporter, a newspaper, or media, a public person, if they wanted to get that information before boarding from public, would they put a public records request into you?
They would. Yes, they would. And that has happened in the past. This is the fourth search.
I know at one time, I don't know how many years ago, there was a, when we moved onto the Ohio Supreme Court, there was a case about when is their resume public and when is it not. And he kind of answered that and said it was public.
Yeah, I think once I receive a formal application on the, on the person, then I believe it becomes public record. And if requested, then I share that information. So a few questions for you, if you would share your thoughts on this. Number one, is residency required for your next superintendent?
I think it's against the law if you require residency.
Certainly would be preferred. However, I don't think, you know, talking to several board members, that is going to be a requirement for this board.
I don't think you can.
Okay.
And we didn't, we didn't previously?
Yeah, we didn't previously.
You could probably put a incentive in the contract and they could voluntarily do it, but you know, when I wasn't on the board, when I was back there, I can see it higher, but I think there was travel on, readjustments on, all of that was built into the contract, and it was based on her moving into the district.
Are you trying to negotiate the contract already?
Yeah, and the other thing is, you know, you have someone who lives in a neighboring district that's, you know, five miles away, and they have to sell their house and move into the, that's just, so if you can't enforce it with consistency, it's, you know, it's not even a, no, no, absolutely not.
If you live in Columbus, you might want to move here.
We hope so, huh?
That's a big hand, huh?
Okay, very good. Next question, would you consider candidates that have retired from a position previously assuming a superintendency and would rehire into your, into your districts? Boards sometimes have some strong feelings on that. Would that, would that be a disqualifier if someone had already retired?
For me, I don't know if it'd be a disqualifier, certainly not, not something that I'm personally willing to look at, to be honest with you. I mean, the district that we have here, we really need to find somebody that is going to be here for quite a long time. I mean, we just, we just ran into a retirement situation where we're now losing our superintendent. We're going through this. I'm certainly not interested in doing that shortly after we hire somebody. So that's only my personal opinion. You know, I certainly would rather have somebody that's in their prime of their career as opposed to near the end of it.
But it's not an absolute disqualifier is what you're saying?
Correct.
It's a consideration, but not a disqualifier?
I would look at, I'm sort of like Tony. My preference would be not to have it, retire, rehire, but if somebody's resume is such that, that you, you know, they had, had, you know, we're with the academic distress commission, you want somebody who's going to move this district forward and hopefully out of that. Okay, so if they've got a killer resume, and I mean, I think you still have to, you have to take a look at it.
Thank you. We don't want to discourage any strong, qualified candidates from applying for the job.
You know, this is how I'm going to look at it, and yes, if you found the right person that could not yet retire and is willing to stay, as Mr. Democia said, three to five years, fine. But you, my thing, I'm looking at the total qualification. As I would if I had a child that needed surgery, I'm going to look for the surgeon that has the track record.
Sure.
And if that person happened to retire two years ago, but is willing to come in, I'm going to look at it.
Thank you.
But again, if you find the right person without, I rehire, I rehire.
Yep, I got you. Thank you.
My comment on that is, I'm looking for the triple A superintendent candidate, first of all. And I'd rather hire that person than somebody who's an A or a B plus. And, but I will take what Tony had in mind, too. The second criteria would be to see what that person's longevity would be. If they're, if they're up in their tenure and they're willing to make a, you know, a five, six-year commitment, I would be more than happy to go with the triple A person as opposed to the A or B plus.
Did we tell you that we've had three superintendents in five years?
I knew that. I knew that.
Next question?
Yeah, you want somebody to come and.
Well, but that's kind of, we had an interim. I mean, we don't want to characterize if we've gone through three. That's, you know, one was very transitional, so you can always have to have two whenever you change.
I always count the numbers.
Next question is, is superintendent experience required? Are you, are you open to looking at people that have been assistant superintendents, high school principals, and so forth? How important it is, is it that the person has, would have been a superintendent?
Isn't that one of those not required but preferred?
Yeah, certainly preferred, I think, at the state of the district where we're at in the direction that we're going, I think this is a position that certainly would be much more beneficial, a sitting superintendent or somebody with superintendency experience. So for me, I'd like to see somebody with that experience as opposed to maybe a first year superintendent coming in here. I mean, we got a lot going on in this district, and we are a very large district, and certainly that experience would speak volumes to the type of candidate we could potentially get.
Understood.
And it gets difficult with experience, because it's not just experience, but what type of experience. So, you know, I mean, we prefer experience, but we also prefer experience maybe in certain types of districts. So again, it gets to be a little bit, and I don't know if we want to get too overly specific as to, we don't want to field out people at this early stage. And sometimes the language presented fields out strong candidates, and we just don't want to discourage anyone.
I agree with you.
When you use the term, when you use the term urban, you have to remember that there's not a lot of what we consider urban, urban districts. Okay, so I mean, and it would, it would limit, it would eliminate some of your candidates, you know, so you don't really want to see that.
Okay, yep, that was my next question, is urban experience a prerequisite? I think probably the sense is it's good if they have that kind of experience, but you don't want to rule somebody that's a quality leader out, maybe because they've been in a suburban district or something like that.
We are, we're not a full, we're a seven in the state category.
Okay.
Which is certainly not an urban district, according to our act.
Right, right.
We're sort of a, we're urban, but we're not, we're not, we're not an Amish, but we're not a Quaker.
Right, right, yep.
You want to mute that phone?
What was that? Is that somebody?
It's me on the phone. Next question is, initial contract, you're probably thinking three years in duration. I mean, normally, that's, that's what, sometimes I get that question.
We're kind of, yeah.
That's the most you can do, right?
With the intent of possibly looking at another two years.
Gotcha.
Anything beyond, my time on the board, wouldn't be fun.
Gotcha. Just a few more questions here. What do you think are the most critical educational needs facing the district?
Good question. I guess I got a couple answers for that.
Go ahead.
You know, obviously, continued improvement in value added and the performance index based on the state standards, that, you know, we're trying to, you know, get to that. We've done a pretty good job with the value added portion, and we just need to bring up that performance index. So I think that is very important. Obviously, I think, just like every other school district, increased graduation rate, we always want to increase that number. We always, here in this district, with certain challenges, we like to, at the least, sustain our enrollment, but we certainly would like to increase it every year. That's so important. You know, the enhancement of alternative programs or career tech programs, looking at creative ways of how this district can do that, move those programs forward. And one, one for me is important is, as you go through and increase that academic achievement, hopefully, you're increasing the staff as well as student morale of the district. I think that's important, establishing relationships in this district particularly, a district that, you know, has seven different unions, one that's unique. You know, it's not a bad thing, but it's unique, and, you know, establishing those positive relationships is certainly critical to, again, increasing our academic achievement. It all makes sense. So for me, those are a couple of the things, you know, I don't want to dominate the conversation, of course, but it's important.
I think the uniqueness of Lorraine schools, we are ninety percent students based on the state's analysis of our economic district. One trait I would be looking for, and don't get too excited to get this, but if somebody walked in with all the others and was bilingual and could speak Spanish, we have to engage the community better than we have. Now, Tom did move us a long way in that direction. We are a great school district, only you'd better see it. Nope, we don't want anybody, well, my grandson, a couple years ago, said, you know what, I did a toe yesterday, I crashed the plane. Where did you crash the plane, Doug? In Lake Erie. Now, I'm on the board, and I didn't know that Longfellow Middle School, there's a partnership with NASA, and they have a flight simulator.
Right.
Probably the only middle school in Lorraine County, or maybe in this whole thing. And we don't tell anybody about that. The other thing the district is, and we've had the OSF, we have, in the last ten years, this district has opened thirteen brand new state-of-the-art facilities. And the one across the street, which will be the Gill and the Crown next year, we have to use that as a draw, because one of the things we have no control over is the shrinking market. Based on the OSFC's last study of the district in 2012, every, every four, was it Jeff? Every four years, they have to do this study. I don't know if there'll be another. Well, comparing nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and five or two thousand and eight, birth rates in the school district have dropped by an average of three hundred per year. And you multiply that over four or five years, and you see there are, let's face it, I don't care how good of a salesperson you are, if you haven't been born, it's pretty hard to get them enrolled. They probably can do that, but, and we have five, twelve districts in the corporate women's of Lorraine, one of them was your older friend at the school point. We have to get the story out, and we have to make our parents happy, and so one of the things I'm going to look for in a candidate is if somebody has a track record. I don't care where they've been, but if some community involvement, steady or increase in enrollment, we have to do that to survive. So that is one characteristic.
Mr. Smith, if I will.
You may.
Yeah, if I may, sorry. Just to digress a little bit, I think we're trying to see what the critical educational needs are with the district. I don't know if we got to the traits or characteristics. I think we're going to have a lot of conversation on that. Are there any other critical education needs that this district is facing that Mr. Smith or myself didn't point out?
Well, I hope that, since we have this present IE strategic framework around academics, our academic improvement plan, that the person coming in would have a capacity to, to follow those pieces where innovation is needed. But again, we've just, it's going to be very critical, their work with this distress commission and the board, so the ability to manage those tasks and stay focused on what the role of the superintendent is, because they're getting pulled in places that are non-traditional, and that most often, I would bet, that there's no one who has that experience, because there's only two commissions. So, well, you don't count that Cleveland thing. Anyway, so I think, I think those, and those will directly relate to our educational attainment. There is a plan in place, and there's been a second modification of the plan, and I'm guessing that's a public record. They'll probably be very familiar with that plan when they come in, at least I hope they are. When we interview them, I hope they've, so however we can share that, I think that's, I don't really want to catch them, you know, on the fly, but that's going to be an expectation. They're going to have questions asked about that in the interview, so.
Sure.
Back in two thousand and one, I was on the citizens' earth that was involved in replacing the power. We were at a meeting in Charleston one night, and just that night, it was Dr. George, who was on the, and if we get one board member asked, did Dr. Church, what is the most important characteristic we should be looking for in a candidate? And I'll never forget his answer. It was a one-word answer, passion. And that is, passion is, what, you know, I don't know how you'd identify it, but that's, you know, when you have it in your gut, you're going to get, and if anybody knows much about Dr. Church, there's probably no more passionate person than selling community products than he is.
Yep.
So passion is, is an overall thing that I, that I want to, you know, what I want to look for.
We've talked about this a little bit, I think Mr. Smith has gone into this a little bit, but community changes, they're impacting the educational system. Is there anything there that might, you want, might want me to share with the candidates or that they should know coming into the position? Anything in terms of the community and things that you see changing over the next few years that might impact the system?
I think, community-wise, not traditional community, but our new emerging community of education, we're dealing with education competition that we haven't had before. So their strength or understanding of that could be very important. That's what we're going to be dealing with for the future. So IE community schools, education choice, and how we philosophically fit into that conversation, they're going to have to be able to, I think, articulate that in a way that positions the district strongly, yet doesn't offend parents who are exercising their choice. And that's, if they can't do that, then we're not going to make any progress probably on that front.
I think one of the, the way I'll, one that I'll look for in candidates, are candidates that ask, I'm not too interested in a candidate that wants to go out, but sign on his name to them. But if somebody's looking at just this, what's your competition? You know, we have a steel plant right now, I think it's still, quote, "Who will we open?" But poverty is greater than that. And someone that can deal with those things, someone, well, you heard the mother here this evening, somebody that's able to deal with situations like that. And so, and has experience, I want to think that.
My last question, any other specific traits that you're looking for in your superintendent? Anything else that you want to share with me as we move into this?
Yeah, I'm really interested in a candidate who's demonstrated and has a track record of advancing a district and with, you know, hard data. And what I mean by that is obviously, you know, improving the academic performance of a district. It was mentioned before that we have competition with schools. We certainly like to find a superintendent who has knowledge and experience in terms of marketing the district to maintain and increase enrollment. Someone who's a problem solver and can exercise executive leadership in moving the district forward in terms of the, the human capital here, in terms of the principles. forward in terms of the, the human capital here, in terms of the principles, each different department this school district has, that superintendent has to be the leader of those different department heads in order to move the district. So I'm looking for leadership in advancing the district on, on multiple fronts. Thank you.
And I think there's something that, I mean, we haven't discussed a lot, we probably will continue this with the board in the ongoing sessions, but the balance of leadership and management, we're in a district that needs critical management also. We have a lot of pieces, lots of moving parts, and sometimes a person's a dynamic leader, but their capacity to manage these moving parts is not a strong suit, we need a person, they, they're going to have to be a strong leader because they're coming into a place that needs leadership, and, but the management principle is going to be something that we have to figure out how to assess, how to evaluate, and you can maybe help us with that also, Dr. Ring, because we're a district that, you know, seven unions, 900 employees, multiple programs, management is, is an issue. And that deals with the business side of this, that deals with the financial side of it, it deals with putting all these pieces so they work functionally well together.
And I think, Mr. Williams brings a good point, is I think maybe looking at somebody that might have some success with working with unions in their past somewhere because of our situation. Also, somebody with a great knowledge of Ohio school law, that certainly is going to be very beneficial in this district. And the other thing I'm looking at is, you know, what kind of relationship have they had with their current board or, or past board? You know, did they establish a positive relationship with that board? I mean, that sometimes is very difficult. I know we have probably the best board in the state of Ohio, but not every board is the same, not every board can be us.
Oh, we said that.
But, but I mean, that's going to be important, and how they establish those relationships, and again, the last thing that I think is, are you done down there?
Well, Mr. Demakia, I would say we probably have the best board presently in Lorraine City School District, I could say that with confidence. Beyond that, I...
You know what, just wrong. But the last thing I would say is, is how, how are they involved in their community? We, you know, in Lorraine, you know, again, Lorraine's a unique city, a great city that has a lot of great potential and a lot of great things going on, and this district certainly has a lot of great things going on. So how they, how do they, they involve themselves and engage our community? You know, are they willing to go to non-school functions? Are they willing to be out there in the public to meet not just parents, but our citizens, our voters, and, you know, because that's important for us, because, you know, unfortunately, the school funding issue forces us to try to pass levies, and in order to pass levies, you have to establish positive relationships with the community, so I think that's also going to be important.
Thank you, that concludes my, my time with you, I appreciate that, unless you have any other questions or comments for me. Give me some good input in, in terms of putting together a profile and who we want in the next superintendent of the Lorraine Schools. We will be finishing up a brochure, I will send that to President Demakia and Treasurer Weber, they'll, they'll get a chance, and if they want to share that with the entire board, that's certainly their prerogative, but we've worked on it, we just need to tweak, tweak it. I, I needed this information to help me pull those things together as well, so we'll have that brochure ready and out to you, and again, thank you for the opportunity, I'm looking forward to working with you.
Mr. Zelli, are you on the phone?
That would be strange.
I don't know, yeah.
Okay.
You know, Mr. Ring, I think it is also important to...
Somebody's there.
Yeah, somebody's there. I think it's also important, important to mention to these candidates the realities of having an academic distress commission, you know, the perception is sometimes negative. I don't think that's the case here in this district, I think that we have established a positive relationship with that commission, and moving forward, I think it's very optimistic for us. So, you know, you got to point out that reality because it is, you know, because of the situation that we're in, but it, I think there's a lot of positives to it, and I think that we're in a great place with this commission, and I think we will be moving forward as well.
Great.
Dr. Zelli, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
I don't, I don't know if you have any questions or comments you want to add?
Um, I had a hard time hearing a lot of what went on. I, I, I think I heard different members describe the, the attributes or the abilities that they were looking for, and I heard at least part of Mr. Ring's description of how we were going to do the process. I can probably check with either Mr. Ring or Mr. Demakia later. I don't know that, I mean, it's, it's all quality that I did hear expressed out through it, and, and so I don't know that I'd have anything to add. I do agree with Mr. Demakia that given the fact that we do, we do have a commission, that we're very interested in making sure that we find someone that can work well with the board and the community and the commission, because ultimately, what this is all about is improving things for the kids of Lorraine, and so I think that we have a good relationship with the board, and I think the commission is looking forward to working with the board to ensuring that we get the best possible candidate to create even better things for the kids of Lorraine in the future.
Mr. Patterson's also present here at the meeting, you saw him now.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
Uh, Mr. Patterson is also present at the meeting, so he can...
Yes, and, and, Mr. Patterson, I can, can also speak, yes, thank you.
Are there any, any questions? Other questions?
Thank you, been a pleasure talking to you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your patience. So I guess that gives a pretty clear idea of what the ESCs will, will be looking for in this process, and I think to wrap this up, to be very clear on this whole process that we are engaging in with the Citizen Committee, in which I think is a great list of folks that are on that committee, as well as the ESC, I think they're doing, going to do a, a great search for this district. But I think it needs to be very clear that ultimately, this Board of Education will select the next superintendent of this district. We are going to certainly value all of these resources, you know, specifically to Citizen Committee, and we look forward to working with both the ESC and the Citizen Committee. But again, with so much going on, I, I think it's very important to get input from two separate arenas, if you will, and if you heard Mr. Ring, he talked about the top 10. You know, they're going to do the search process, come up with the top 10, and give that top 10 to not only this board, but to the Citizen Screening Committee, and they will keep the top 10 themselves, and they will come up with their top five, the Screening Committee will come up with their top five, and of course, the board will still have an opportunity to see on paper all 10 of those top applicants, so, you know, we want to come up with our own top five, we certainly can, but there'll be a lot of dialogue and a lot of conversations and a lot of input throughout this process, we just want to make sure that we do everything we can to make sure we get the highest quality of superintendent for this district, as well as the long-term future of the district. So I think that's going to be important moving forward.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
When are we going to appoint the committee? Can we do that tonight?
Mr. Smith, I'll be happy to announce that tonight if you'd like.
Well, usually, well, I think what we did last, Mr. Williams may remember, I think we brought the names and then the board voted to put them on the committee.
Yeah, and I, if you recall, maybe you didn't see it, I sent an email.
Yeah, I have the names and I...
With that list of names.
Emailed you back, I was fighting with it, so, can we do that tonight, or do you want to do that at the next meeting, or did, I think we have to take official action.
Well, why not?
Do it.
Let's do it.
Let's do it tonight.
The sooner the better. Let me, while we're talking about that, I guess, let me talk about that Citizen Screening Committee, there were several individuals that have been selected to work on that screening committee. Obviously, I think it's important that we have board presence in, on that committee, and I will myself be chairing that committee. We will also have on that committee Gene Rice, Victor Leandry, who I see is here this evening, thank you for being here, and thank you for your time and support of the district, Roberto Davila will also be on there, Tony Richardson, Janet Garcia, Myrna Jones, Melanie Williams, Dorinda Hall, Mayor Chase Rittenhour will be the vice chair of that committee, and then the commission will also have representation on that committee as well. They are still working on that, on who that individual will be, so as soon as we find that out from Dr. Zelli in the commission, then we'll put that name on that committee as well. So with that being said, I do need a motion to approve the Citizen Screening Committee for the selection of the superintendent of Lorraine City Schools.
So move?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Fallis?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes. Any other discussion? Dr. Zelli, any other discussion on your end over there?
Um, I don't think so, I think I'm fine.
Perfect. Then what I'd like to do is end the portion of the board work session, and our next board meeting will be May 4th, right here, at 6:30. We will be, the district will be reaching out to that, those folks from the community as a screening committee and letting them know of that appointment, and we will set a date and time for them to meet with Greg Ring and explain to them what the roles and responsibilities will be and what, what the next step will be going through this process. Okay? If there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Fallis?
Yes.
Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Demakia?
No.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.
To purchase a high-quality copy of the program you just viewed, please call Lorraine City Schools Television at 282-8400.